This meeting to order. Didn't have to use the gavel, but I can.
Yet.
Right. Good afternoon, Mike, please come up and join us. Yeah. Good afternoon, I'm Barb Nosher, the Mayor of Durango, and this is our joint study session with the county commissioners. I'm going to start by just going around and introducing yourself so that folks listening to on the speakers can have a sense of who's speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Oxford County Commissioner, Chair.
Melissa, South Mayor of Proton City of Durango.
Kim Baxter's Durango City Councilor.
Oli Losmont, City Council.
I'm Chuck Stevens, County Manager.
Erin Hader, Assistant City Mayor.
Mike Stevens, Deputy County Manager.
Marsha Porter Norton, Platte County Commissioner.
Clyde Church, Platte County Commissioner.
Great, thank you. I will note that our city manager is on a well-deserved holiday, and so people is not in attendance, but we're well-prepared for this meeting. I will start, as I like to start many of the meetings that I chair, with a land acknowledgement. This is my land acknowledgement, it does not reflect the consensus or views of council. So for thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Denai, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this legacy. And we'll just add that Jessica Bula's just joined us. Welcome. Great. So our agenda today, just want to make sure everybody's clear, we have two hours, I believe, allocated for this meeting, although we have not put times around them. But we will have three main points of interest. Discussion regarding the joint sales tax budget, discussion on the CR 250, 251, which I believe will also recruit some next steps or suggested next steps, and discussion on the library district survey update that Luke will be providing us at the end. So does anyone have any comments on the agenda? Right, then let's get started with the joint sales tax. Chuck, is someone out there about? Who's presenting?
We'll start, Erin from our new financial analyst. I don't know that the councils had an opportunity to meet yet. He's going to be giving the presentation. While he's getting set up, I'll tell you, may not be familiar with Erin, but you're certainly familiar with the slides you're about to see. I think we've changed it to a traditional pie graph. It's no longer the penny, but we're taught about the pennies.
Great, and thank you for having us in advance. This is on our website, if anyone's listening, and you should be able to see it from the agenda packet materials.
All right. So again, brief introduction, my name's Erin, I am a financial analyst for Platte County. To get started, I'm doing sales tax fun. So I think most of you are familiar with the two penny model that we have. And in this two penny model, what you'll see is that in 1975, there was an initial tax that was split out percentage-wise between Platte County, Bayfield, Nacio, and Durango. And then in 1982, a second penny was established that pretty much did a carve-out for joint sales tax, changing the percentages. So bringing that joint sales tax to 11% in total. So proposed 2022 allocations, 2023 allocations. What you're going to find is that the projected sales tax for 2022 is about $3.77 million. And then for 2023, it's $3.98 million. Of that, we're taking the previously established model of 22.2%. That's carved out for the Durango Library, and that's $3.28 million. And then Durango Senior Services will be at this 17.3%, equalling $690,000. The, I think it's important to note that these percentages are taken after we reduce the total 2023 proposed amount for sales tax with that landfill by 10,000. This year, we also removed Southwest COGS broadband grant portion, just since there wasn't a request for that. So that amount this year is zero. So real quick, Erin, on that. So I think everyone's familiar that there's been a little bit of reorganization with the Southwest Council of Governments, that Southwest COG. That line item has been carried for the last few years. I don't remember how many. And that was really just a line item to provide funding for grant match. If an opportunity came up throughout the year, the COG had a specifically a broadband grant they needed match for, there was a line item available for that. So that was there. But with the reorganization of Southwest COG now falling under Region 9, they reviewed some things, they tweaked some things, and just a different model. So when the request came in this year, there was no longer a request to carry that line item. So we're removing it from the joint sales tax proposed budget.
And could I also add that the language, because I think, Marsha, you and I both looked into this, the language does not actually require us to do these two identified projects. It is more for something that the city and the county agree upon. So I want to make that real clear to everyone. And also that the 82.2 and the 17.3 is historical, but it also is not a requirement. It has just been past practice for many years. I think that needs to be real clear too, and for the community listening to that.
That actually brings up one of my questions, was the allocation for the Durango Library. I don't remember, I've looked at it in the budget book.
I brought it.
What is the, what is the budget for the library?
The budget for the library is less than allocated. The budget for the library, the proposed budget right now, and we've got, had a meeting, is $3,206,000. Okay, that needs to be clear too.
Yeah, so, but we haven't completed our budget.
No, we haven't.
But this literally, this would cover that for sure. And then if we change a little bit the budget, we're fine. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Yeah, we'll be meeting on Monday, but all the councils look at it. We haven't discussed it.
Excellent, okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Please continue, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Getting into the numbers, I think it's important to note on sales tax that what you're actually, that these numbers, oops, excuse me, right here, for the 2022 estimated are off of details or numbers coming out of July. So it's just over six months of the year. Projected numbers as well are coming out, and we're extrapolating. So what you'll notice is that these numbers will change as we go further down the road. So the beginning fund balance that we're budgeting for 2023 is 1.52 million. And that's a slight decrease of $240,000. You'll see that the increase in sales tax is going from 3.7 to 3.9, as previously disclosed. We're keeping miscellaneous at 3,000, and that brings us to a total operating revenue of $3.98 million. Transfers out to the Durango landfill is holding steady at the 10,000. To Durango Senior Services, we're increasing by 64,000 to $690,000. The, our capital request for senior services is for a new roof, and that's increasing by 154,000 to $325,000. Then the public library is sitting at 3.28 million for the year of 2023, and that's increasing by 304,000. So you'll note that senior services, library, are going to hold pretty true to that 17.3 and 82.2% breakout of the sales tax. There was an unexpected line item off of the 2022 budget that came through, and that was for an HVAC unit for the library. And I have that at 339,000. Southwest Council was removed, so that decreased by a small amount. The hazardous waste roundup, that looks to be a every-two-year deal, so that was removed as well off of the 2023 budget, since it was adopted or put in on the 2022. Homeless expenditures, we've kept flat at 125 for now, and there's a slight overage within the 2022 for the end of the year on that projected, and we can get into that a little later. I removed this recon budget to actual, since it was adopted before this transfer out city and county. It used to be a 10% allocation to hold in case any of these line items above ran over. And that's what the transfer out city and county is also for. So you'll notice that there is nothing in the 2023 budget. It has flowed down to the transfer out for city and county. So total operating expenses will be 5.25 million, and it's just a slight increase of 110,000. You'll see that the ending fund balance is still at 250,000 for 2023. So that brings us to any questions?
Questions from commissioners or council?
So we're not anticipating doing any transfers out in 2022 then? Although that was in the budget to do that.
Yep, that's my question too.
And yeah, so what's shifted that thinking? Or hasn't shifted?
I'll take first swing at that.
Okay.
So if, just remember the history of why that line item was created was previously, maybe three years ago, there was a transfers out line item. So there was no mechanism mid-year to take money out of the joint sales tax fund balance. So we added that line item. So we're basically, we're taking the fund balance, reducing it to its minimum according to the IGA, and creating a line item that says transfers in amount. If during the year, there's an unanticipated expenditure that comes forward and the elected bodies agree to funding it, we have a place to go and get it. For example, with HVAC.
Yeah.
So, so there's not, there hasn't been in the three-ish years since we've created that line item. I don't know that there's been a, a project established during the year that said, "We're going to use the transfers out line item for this." The only exception might be the HVAC.
Right, so.
From this year.
So what I'm, I understand that, and thank you. What I'm asking is, I think we would not have put it into transfer out if we had not anticipated that we might be doing so. What changed there?
I can take, I can take this. So the way it's been explained to me is common practice is every year in the adopted budget, you put the remainder that is there as a plug, basically, so that if both parties decide that they want to take the money, they can. That's, it's a 50-50 splits, how it's been explained. It, that's merely what it's there for, is just to show that. And then every year in the estimated thus far, we remove it out from the budget, therefore raising your fund balance, so you can see how much money you're actually working with. And we carry that forward.
So then what I'm guessing is, because this is the way the county has to budget, if it's not in the budget, you can't do anything with it.
Right.
And, and we can reappropriate later. So this allows us to have that, all that flexibility, is what I'm hearing.
That's correct.
Okay, great.
And we didn't use it, I mean, I'm stating, I think, what you already said. We didn't use it this year, so that's why, since this meeting is today, you're putting it in the fund balance for next year. Yeah.
So Erin, if you'll go back to the detail, maybe we could just start with the homeless expenditure going, and that's a great.
Yeah.
So if you remember, we budgeted $125,000 in 2022, and you can see that, that we actually spent $231,000. If you remember earlier in the year, we, we brought a proposal from Manna Soup Kitchen to the elected bodies to fully fund the Resource Navigation Center. And that was $170,000, and the elected bodies agreed to do that. So that's where that overage is coming from. You can see that we have carried forward that $125,000. However, we met with Manna yesterday at board discussion time. Manna, Anne Morris came and mentioned that to fully fund the operations of the Resource Navigation Resource Center for next year, she would need approximately $180,000. So if the city council and board of county commissioners would like to continue to fund the, the Resource and Navigation Center, we will likely need to, and, and continue to fund it from the joint sales tax, we will need to increase that number to approximately $180,000. When I get the exact numbers from there, I can, I can follow up, but that was another that she presented yesterday. So I apologize that, that we didn't update the size with the, the items already posted, and we got this iteration yesterday, so.
And I also think we should add, just as we're thinking about this, that what you proposed for the library is 277,000 more than the library's requested.
Correct.
Yeah.
From us, and they do a joint budget, so. I think that's, it just needs to keep that in mind, that you have, that's some money that might be available.
Yeah, for the additional 55.
I'll, I'll have questions about the library when we talk to that, but I did want to bring that number up. Other questions on homeless? Do we need to talk more about that, that subject matter as far as funding?
I'm wondering if we need to actually agree that, make it official.
Yeah, are you looking for an answer now?
Yeah.
Well, before, before the end of our two hours, yeah. We want to know for sure. I, I know how these conversations evolve, so I wasn't going to press the issue right now.
Correct.
When we adjourn, we'll, we'll need to know kind of what we want these numbers to be.
Okay.
Question on that, if I can, Chuck. On the 180 requests for the operations of the Navigation Center for 2023, is that the same amount that they had requested last year? Is it the same? Or, I'm just curious.
I don't have the detailed breakout yet, but I think it's going to be flat with, with their operational expenditures for 2022.
Okay, so similar type of expenses, but we, you don't probably have the detail. I, I'm just, I'm just curious what that detailed breakout might look like as far as what is the 180 to the 70?
I don't have it yet.
We, oh, we don't have it. We just have just a general number.
Right, yeah, I don't have the detail.
Isn't it, I mean, just, I don't have the details either, but it's part of Anne's time to be the Director of the Navigation Center. I think it's navigators that are, it's the staff that are there helping people navigate.
Street outreach.
Street outreach, and then, yeah. And then isn't it Sandia Atkinson's time to facilitate the CCH? But I think, I think it's mostly staff. I don't know that it's supplies or capital or anything like, like that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, and I think regardless of how we go forward today.
Yeah.
That would be good information, I think, for us to have, to understand.
Right.
What we're paying for.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, just if, if we decide to do that.
We're going to start meeting with monthly, because this whole discussion has made us realize we want to be more in the loop on the CCH in general.
Yeah.
So they came back to, they came to us like three weeks ago, and then just to get on a calendar, they came again yesterday, so.
Great.
Yeah.
And we'll be back on the 9th, and we're going to mid-December, just because end of year, it's a tough calendar.
So in the past, we've allocated other funds as well, though, for, originally it was with the, the camp at Purple Cliffs, but would they not also request some funds, I would think, for something that might come up, opportunities or some challenges? Whether it's things that, you know, equipment needs that might be necessary? Nothing like that is in the request right now?
They, they haven't. I know that, that Anne works really hard to pursue grants. It's been pretty successful. She, she has given me some, some heads-up warning type, I was going to say warning orders. She's given me heads-up, you know, along the way, that if I can't get this grant, I might be coming to, to government to help me out here and there. But so far, she hasn't had to come to us to ask for anything. She's been successful in pursuing grants.
And silly question, maybe it sounds stupid question about that. Homeless expenditures, if we were to increase that to 180 and leave everything else the same, then it would just change, take, it would just adjust the transfers out?
That's correct.
Yes.
Would it be beneficial to allocate more money to the homeless if you're pursuing with any managed camp or any acquisition or anything of that nature to have part of the joint sales tax money?
The counselor, the fact that we have the line item now gives us flexibility that we haven't had previously. So I think having the line item and having it funded at a number, whether it's 125 or 180, whatever we decide today to put in there, we would have the flexibility mid-year, let's say that, you know, there's an opportunity and we need an extra $50,000. We could do the, the transfer from the transfers out line item into this line item, and we could do that very, very quickly. If the transfers out is at the end of the year, is it? Doesn't have to be at the end of the year, we could do it mid-year.
We could just do it at a joint meeting chat?
Yeah, exactly. Collectively, bring the group together, discuss whatever the proposal was, the dollar amount, and just like with the HVAC.
I was just saying, just like with the HVAC.
Yeah.
So the advantage of that is, we could also, with some of these grants, they might require some kind of match. So if we have a pot of money that isn't predetermined, we could possibly use that. Because that's a very common thing with what we're seeing with this funding.
But what is the benefit of having that number in transfer out? Instead of just having a zero, and then if we have, start accumulating money and we're not spending anything towards the end of the year, we can still decide.
The county can't do it.
They can't do it that way.
They have to.
We need a placeholder.
Yeah. They, they can't change the budget.
Yeah, right. Plus it ensures that that money goes to that account.
You may, you can make it less, but you can't make it more.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Up to 250, correct? It is mid-low as 250.
What's the?
The minimum balance needs to be 250.
250.
250.
Leave, leave at least.
Yep. Um, I'll just go ahead.
If, you know, since we're still on the homeless line item, Chuck, I would like for you to be able to update on Purple Cliffs.
Okay.
Which would, could potentially impact this.
Okay, sure. So as you're all aware, on September 30th, the last day of September, we began tagging camps at Purple Cliffs and throughout other county-owned land in the unincorporated counties. So the Tech Center, for example, any encampments that were up there, we tagged them with a 72-hour notice that they needed to remove their belongings. And then on October 3rd, and 4th, and 5th, last week, we began removing, for those campers that did not vacate, we, we started inventorying and removing personal property and storing that. Of course, we let them know where they could buy their property. We did extensive outreach and engagement, partnering with, with Manna and using their street outreach program. Over the, the last few months, we saw the census of Purple Cliffs decline steadily. We think that the high water mark in summer was probably around 150, 160 camps, campers. I'm sorry, not camps, but campers. We saw that come down. Mid-September, we were down to less than 40 campers. And then on Monday, the 3rd of October, we, we had four or less campers remaining at Purple Cliffs. I will editorialize a little bit here. I'm incredibly proud of law enforcement and the work that they did, and our partnership with, with Manna Soup Kitchen and the Street Outreach Program, Access Health Systems, Project Roxy, and their expertise and assistance, because it was the board's intent and guidance to us to, to close this encampment in a trauma-informed manner. And we've done that. And it, it was an incredibly difficult task. There were some days where it was very emotional, and there were certainly opportunities for, for the situation to devolve, and some very bad outcomes could have occurred. But I'm incredibly proud of the entire team that was out there for all of the de-escalation that they did. Engaging each individual, trying to build relationships, trying to understand their individual circumstances, and connect them with the services that they needed. The guidance from the elected bodies were to prioritize families, pregnant women, youth. We, we did that. We, by the middle of September, all of the families at Purple Cliffs had been brought into the coordinated entry system and, and had been placed in motels. All of the pregnant individuals had also been brought into coordinated entry and placed in the motels. So it was, it was an incredibly challenging environment to operate in, and there was no shortage of opportunities for, for things to escalate, and frankly, they didn't. And, and that's, that's really a testimony to each and every individual on-site, on the ground, and the engagement that they did. That's where Purple Cliffs is now. Its population is zero, but we have to check it every day, because we, we know that people continue to go back up there. We're already seeing people going up back into the hills to, to scavenge what's left of, of the, you know, the belongings that are up there. So we're constantly having, law enforcement's constantly having to go out there and, and remind people that it is closed to camping. We're continuing to enforce, you know, in other areas, the Tech Center, for example, tag tents, go through that process where we can. And now we are, frankly, now we're left with cleanup. And, and just to be clear, we've gotten some, some inquiries from, from residents over the past week or so, there might be some confusion. The only cleanup that's occurred out of Purple Cliffs thus far has been conducted by county staff and jail trustees. That's it. So our general services team, our sheriff's deputies have volunteered their time, and, and we've had trustees from the jail assisting. We have not paid or contracted with anybody to conduct cleanup at Purple Cliffs so far. We are following our procurement code. We will go out to bid, and we will, you know, contract that service in accordance with our procurement code, just like we would with anything else. And I think that's a good segue to what I understand the board of county commissioners wants to ask of this group today is, would city council be willing to share in the costs of that cleanup using the joint sales tax fund? I think I'll stop there.
It's interesting that you bring that up, because last night in the Parks and Rec Board meeting, one of the conversations was about Purple Cliffs and other things. And, and it was, Turri mentioned that some of that has spilled over and onto city land also. There will be cleanup needed on city land also. And so would you be thinking that we would incorporate all of that together?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
As you, as you all know, I mean, part of the challenge that we've had in enforcing no camping anywhere is the, the checkerboard mosaic that is our county. And you can walk 10 feet in any direction, it'd be a BLM land, or a city land, or private land, and now you're back on county land. It's been very challenging. And that's not only at Purple Cliffs, that's at the Tech Center. That's, that's at X-Rock. We just found out yesterday that county-owned land at X-Rock is actually in the city limits. So enforcement changed just yesterday. Jurisdiction's changed. So, so it's, it's a challenge, and I think, I think, and I don't want to speak for the board, they're here, but I think our interest is in reclaiming the land, being good stewards of the land, and being responsible to our residents. So I, I can't see a scenario where if the county were contracting with someone to come in and do cleanup, that we draw a hard line and say, you know, "Don't go over there, because that's city." Absolutely not. We would contract them all, yes.
It's cost-effective.
Thank you, Chuck.
So, and this would be, I think you said this, Chuck, I'm sorry, a professional company. We don't want, there's apparently going to be some misinformation again about that volunteers will be asked to go out there. No, this is not for volunteers.
Do you have any idea on estimation of cost, or any idea?
This is just an estimated guess, and we haven't received bids, and we haven't gone out. But we're guessing based on other cleanups that we've done. I get X-Rock this year, we're guessing it's probably close to $250,000.
Okay, and then one more question on that. Is there going to be any need for, you know, environmental cleanup? Or, you know, I mean, are we concerned about flash floods? You know, I mean, with all the traffic that's been up there, there's, you know, the hillside, and it has been segregated, so I'm just curious.
Revegetation, restoration of the?
Yeah, restoration, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, can we, should we be thinking of that as well in this? Because.
Because it was, you know, I mean, it was terraced in some ways, kind of out, and I'm not certain those terraces will hold.
I believe, commissioners, please, our first step would be remediation and cleanup. Then, of course, I am all ears for revegetation.
Especially if you see that mud's coming down into a close road and blocking the road through the winters.
It has, we had the last large rainstorm that went across the country.
That's.
And flooded some of the camps.
Yeah. So I just did some, just as a suggestion, I'm just keeping every thoughts in front. If, if we. If, if we looked at what the library has requested and if we added in the amount that the Manna has requested, we would have, looks like two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars that would have been savings through this. The savings being we budgeted three point two, the budget is for three point two seven nine for the library. The library needs three million two. That's two hundred and seventy-seven. But if you add in the additional fifty-five that Aaron's, or if you add in the additional fifty-five that the Manna wants.
Does the Manna's for next year?
It's all for next year, right?
Yeah. Or we, and, and or if we wanted to go up to two fifty, we could also just reduce that fund balance.
Yeah, that's right.
And take it out of the transfer out for this year.
So I'm hearing you request the four hundred and thirty thousand for the one eighty. Well, no, it wouldn't be four thirty.
Two twenty-five plus one eighty.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, because well, but we're already, it's not one eighty.
It'd be fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, right, right. Additional, yeah.
Additional, so, um.
Three hundred and five thousand.
With the caveat that it's, this is a professional company that went to X Rock.
But then we have savings.
Correct.
And, and we don't know who would do it. But they, they would completely go over to city land depending on, you know, we'd have to go have a look at it and do a bid.
I, I just got a text from, from Sarah Jacobson, who's county administration who's listening to the call and is leading our effort to, to procure our company. She said that our bid does include revegetation.
Oh, it does. So counselors, thoughts on, on sharing, splitting this cost and, um, taking it out, taking it out of joint sales tax?
I would support that. I'll start. I think, or yeah, I, I support it as well. I think that, you know, all along we've said we are partners in this and we, I, I stand by that to closure. Um, and, um, I think that this is a good use of funds for us to do that. And I'm really glad it includes revegetation.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I, I support, I support that shared partnership through, through the end of the year. And, and anything we do going forward as well, by the way, with the navigation center and everything.
Kim, you said that.
Yeah, I would support the one eighty for the navigation center and then two fifty-ish or whatever that. For the cleanup of the Purple Cliffs area and revegetation of that area, remediation, whatever they see fit to, to see as necessary. I would definitely support that in joint sales tax.
I support that as well. I think all the way up to the river port, there was impacts. When we finish with the homeless, can I ask a question on this table?
Sure, but let's just get a consensus that we have this, Jessica.
Sure. I need to have same from voting on the Manna. I think I need to talk to Dirk about a couple of things real quick, just.
Okay.
We're not voting. No, I know. And I know we're not voting, but I just feel like I shouldn't potentially have my input. Um, but I, in terms of sharing the cost for remediation, yes, absolutely.
And I fully, wholly, fully support it. I think to, to reiterate to Alyssa's comment, we are partners in this. We've been partners in it all along, and I think we will continue to be partners in this September. Uh, so I wholly support it and appreciate the city on handling the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate it.
Now you had a question.
Yeah, on this table, can, can you explain a little bit on the council government's fee? And the reason I ask is it says eight point four last year. And just, or this year, sorry. And, and I'm the liaison. And then last year's numbers for the county were over fifty thousand. For the city, it was thirty thousand for the call. Uh, and this year, there is a proposed fee for the call combined with region nine in the same order of magnitude. So I was just trying to understand where the difference lies. Is this part of it? Is this county section only or? I, I don't know the details.
So the Southwest COG line? That's what I was referring to earlier. So in, in our budget for, for Southwest COG, in the county's budget, we had two different entries, one in our general fund, that's where we paid the fees. Okay? And out of the joint sales tax, this was a line item that's a placeholder for broadband grants for match if needed. This came about, I think in two thousand sixteen or seventeen. Um, Maryam, the director at the time, wanted to have some funds available if, if a grant came forward, she could quickly have match. Okay. With, with the reorganization of the COG under region nine, they did not request those funds this year. So it's dropped from whatever it was last year, eighty-five hundred, down to zero. Yeah, eighty, eighty-four hundred last year, down to zero. We're zeroing that out.
All right. Thank you for clarifying.
It's not dues.
Yeah.
It's not dues. It's a shorthand.
Could I, could I suggest? Now, since we have this pretty much consensus, could I suggest that we actually talk a little bit about the library before we go into your, your thing, just the financing of the library? So I'm gonna open that up. Any questions or thoughts?
I, I'll make a comment on that if, if I may. Since the library district is under discussion, I was wondering if, uh, in case the library district does not move forward, if we can fix a part of this joint sales tax to be automatically allocated to the library so that we are assured of these services that they want and now and in the future. And make sure that we don't have to have all these discussions, you know, on how much and going back and forth. So is that something that would be worthwhile? Defining, is it possible to define that?
So I would, I'd like to open that up, but I also say, I want to keep in mind that we're going to get an update on where we are with the library forming its own district. There's no voting today on this. And, um, I also think from a budgetary point of view, if I'm remembering correctly, this district discussion would not go forward for at least another year, if I'm remembering correctly, possibly a year and a half. So, and they're shaking their heads at yes. And I'm looking to maybe Melissa and Luke is shaking his head. So that's one question. It's just keeping in mind that the timeframe. I also, I read, would, so I can't answer it, but we'll keep it as we think about this discussion to answer, come back to your question. I also would like us to think about ultimately, are we in a position to pay off all the debt from the two, when the two thousand and five tax ends? Have we gotten sufficient funding to cover all of the debt for the library? And I know Luke may discuss that later too in our discussion. Um, and if there was any interest in, in considering a redirection of that sales tax, what would be necessary to pay off the debt before any redirection? Cause the council has had that discussion of possibly even looking at it in two thousand and three. So what is necessary? Because it may mean that you need to put some money aside in the, in a fund to pay off ultimate debt. So I think there's some other things to think about with the library.
So can we go back to what I was asking? Is, is there an interest to, uh, consider fixing a certain portion of the, which we now do voluntarily, but we have these discussions, eighty-two point, what was it? Eighty-two percent? Um, to fix it so that these discussions don't have to take place and the library has a guaranteed, guaranteed source of funding in the long term.
And that's. Counselors, commissioners, I'll start with you since the council raised the question.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we're heading into an uncertain time.
Yeah.
Um, we know inflation has been eating up a lot of our, uh, tax dollars on projects. And that we're looking at the potential of a recession in eighty-three or eighty-four. And, uh, yeah, it's hard to make a long-term commitment. I think at this time. That's my personal thought. Um, but we're a good, we're a good shape this year. Question is next year and the year after that. So.
My question would be, um, so the district, and we can, we can answer this later. So if it went to ballot, let's say in twenty-four, that would be the timeline you said.
Yes, I believe that's the time.
Really, we would have two more years of needing these discussions. So, I mean, I, I can't imagine when I'm in office not funding the library, you know, so I don't. But I, I mean, I see you're wanting certainty, but then it wouldn't be necessary if the vote goes to ballot and passes. It would really be a two-year conversation. Does that make sense? So, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't see a, you know, can we all just affirm that we support the library? Are you looking for like a MOU that says we're always going to use the over eighty percent? What are you looking for?
To me, I think this is, we've had these discussions quite a bit. I just think the library needs some guarantees. That's the whole reason why the district was such an important discussion, to have a guaranteed source of funding. And if the economy goes downward, as, as you mentioned, that also means the sales tax go down. So that, that also probably means that the services at the library should go down. Cause if everybody's suffering, then that part has to suffer too. But I think to make sure we have adequate funding and not have to go through, we do it anyway. So what is the difficulty to formalize? But I, I understand your point. It's maybe only two years.
I also think it could dampen the vote.
Yeah.
Because people go like, well, why do we need to vote for this if you guys already locked it in?
Right.
So.
I mean, Mike, Mike had, I was gonna have another commissioner and then I'll go to Mike.
Uh, Olivia, I completely understand and agree with what you're saying, but my concerns are in a recession. Uh, we would say, let's say eighty-five percent of JST will always go to the library for those two years. Well, what if that eighty-five percent is less than what we're looking at right now? Um, so at least it gives us a little bit of freedom to talk and to be able to reallocate, move money around and to be able to keep. We, the commissioners are in full support of the library. That's why we're at these discussions. Um, so at least I, I'm comfortable with still saying it, what we is that I'm here to make sure that the library is fully functioning. Um, but if we're in a recession, I, I like to have that freedom to be able to say otherwise.
Mike, you, you would indicate.
I was just gonna point out that I think it's possibly a violation of the constitution of multi-year financial obligation.
Exactly. Unless it was in the original vote.
It wasn't in the vote.
Yeah, yeah, which it wasn't.
Okay.
So counselor.
Well, I just also wanted to say to, to Matt's point, uh, Commissioner Salko's point is that it didn't used to be that the JST covered all of the library costs. Whenever it was different than that eighty-two percent, the general fund took the, the rest of it and paid for it. So to your point, as things change and our intention now is to always pay for that at the JST unless there's a district, that, you know, that, that's why we're doing this. So we're going forward that way. And I actually think that it's really good because this is a county-city resource and I think we need to talk about it every year. I don't think it should just be get pushed aside because the money's already been allocated. I think we should always talk about it.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Jessica, Melissa.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I, I agree. I think, well, I was gonna ask if it was, can you tie other councils' hands in setting that? Um, but I think it's important that we all, you know, state and agree that we do support the library and we want to see it. And then also if the budget is less and we can move some money around to, you know, fund more cleanup at Purple Cliffs or like whatever we need to do. I think it's good to have, um, council and, um, commission discretion with some of that.
Agreed. And, and I also agree. I think we need, um, we need the flexibility to be able to respond to challenges unforeseen circumstances and opportunities. But I think it's very clear, the commitment to the library, which is why we're all here and have to, uh, have a counselor and a commissioner serving on that library advisory board and are looking at this possibility of more secure, stable funding, predictable funding for the library. Um, I don't know that right now we'll get it, but we have asked from Luke to give us in the future a sense of what those debt payments will look like, how much we need to be thinking about, making certain that we have those set aside. And I think that's a joint responsibility. Uh, but we have been quite open about the possibility of a, a ballot to reconsider the purpose of some of that sales tax. Erin.
Mayor, if you'd like, Devon is online and she has those, that those amounts they were referencing and also the proposed library budget for twenty twenty-three that offers a little bit more tailoring inside.
Yeah. Yeah, I also have that. I brought it in case of the budget, but, but would anyone like to hear those numbers from Erin? I mean, from Devon, excuse me.
I think that's going to be part of our budget discussion on Monday.
Yeah, and I think it'll come out.
And it's really a same conversation. It's not county conversations.
And we're not going to solve it at this one.
Right, but to put it up.
Devon, thank you for being available. We appreciate it so much. So any other thoughts on the library right now?
Great. H fact is going to be coming online?
Monday.
Monday.
It's supposed to be completed, put it all on Monday.
Nice.
Good. I think we're pleased there. Um, any other uses that are on there that we need to discuss? Um, you know, we did that hazardous waste roundup. I believe we did it just in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, right? We just did that. Was there enough demand to actually have it considered rather than every two years? Again, because especially during COVID when we may not have done it.
We, we actually, so two years ago, we met and we said we want to do it. The demand was so overwhelming. He said we wanted to do it again next year. And then we were unable to do it because, um, conflicts with the vendor, conflicts with the fairgrounds because of COVID support, we didn't have the space, so we omitted it. So we held it this year. Um, so even though we wanted to do it every year, we ended up going back to an every other year cycle. Um, the event just took place about three weeks ago, uh, three weekends ago. And high demand, but it wasn't overwhelming. There was, we didn't see the, uh, the line of cars did not extend out onto North Main like it did two years ago. So we were able to bring people in onto the fairgrounds campus, route them through and, and get people through. So I think the county is comfortable with doing this again in twenty-four.
And I will say I participated in this year because I had some paint. And what, after I did some more research, even though I'd already, I'd planned on going that Saturday, I went ahead and went. But that paint could have been taken to the tech center at any point in time. It didn't require the hazardous waste day to do it. And that may be part of the reason why, I don't know how new that Porsche is, maybe it's always been that way. But some of the pressure may be off the hazardous waste day because the paint could be taken in at any point in time.
And paint can always go back to a paint store. So, so when you buy a gallon of paint or you pay a fee, which is the, the reuse, recycle fee or whatever it's called. And so you can take old paint cans anytime, whether it's to the transfer station or to one of the independent paint shops. I don't know if you can take the old Dior.
So I, unless I hear otherwise, are we pretty, provided a fair amount of direction on the joint sales tax so far?
Yeah, looks good. Thank you, everybody. All right. So next on the agenda is, I'm looking for Allison, is the County Road two fifty and two fifty-one. Allison, are you coming up? Great.
Good afternoon. I'm Allison Baker. I'm the Labor Department Director for the City of Durango. And I don't have a whole lot to report. I put a copy in the documents that you've got. We are moving forward on the right way acquisition. I'm working, must have, uh, getting a review from the, uh, city attorney on the form of the, the purchase agreements and some of the, uh, real estate discussion. We did have an additional conversation with Multimodal to, to look over the project and discussed a few bicycle-related items. As we, our current status, we're still anticipating that uh, the land acquisition will be complete by the end of twenty twenty-three and that we would go to construction, go early in the year to bid, uh, probably in February, go out to bid in February and start as soon as the weather allows.
Start in twenty February twenty twenty-four, twenty-three. Twenty-three, oh, so you, okay, okay. So land acquisition end of when?
Uh, the end of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Okay.
I said twenty-three.
That's what I thought, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so land acquisition ended this year.
Right.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Anything, any questions or?
We left it, Mayor, we left it last time that we are negotiating an IGA around the costs, correct?
Yes, and I did get the draft IGA that you had sent over.
Okay.
And was working on, uh, that with Dirk.
Okay.
So be it the year.
All right.
And then I can, I'm gonna ask a question by using an analogy here. And that is, I do understand we said that we would be in support of paying for half. The question I have on that is, I'll give an example of, I'm gonna go car shopping with my wife and, you know, I know I gotta buy a vehicle and it's gonna get me from point A to B. The job, all it's gonna do is give me, get her to work and back and forth. But she wants the leather, she wants the chrome wheels. So the question is, what is the definition of half? As I'm all for curb and gutter sidewalks, but when we start getting into into the the extra packages instead of the base model, my question is, is what does the council see as half?
Well, I think that the plans that we were supplied isn't the actual, like, extra, like, I think some of the councillors were actually pushing for more. And we said because county was going in on with us and we didn't want to push, that we were sticking with, like, you know, meeting our standards and codes, but not going over. Am I correct?
You are.
Okay.
Um, we are at the, um, entry level model. It is very substantial and, uh, will be provide effective service and protection for, uh, multiple types of access over the coming years. And if at a future date, the city decides that they would like to do an upgrade, then that would be a separate discussion. Um, I'm happy to share, uh, the plans. I'm sure we have an electronic.
And we have, and we have an electronic form. I really appreciate it. I mean, we're all for making sure there's safety for bikes and for, uh, being on sidewalks. But it it's definitely, so thank you for the prediction.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear. It's minimum, I believe it's minimum to meet annexation.
That's correct.
Right, and and I think there's standards.
Standards.
Yeah, there's standards with that, so.
To follow up on council fuels, it's, you know, basically what do we need to annex this area?
And it's what's included in the documents that we all currently have. That's what we're splitting the cost of.
Yes.
We decide to put in, you know, fifty more trees, that's on us, the city, not the county. Like, what we have documented stores, what we expect.
That's right.
Or a hundred percent.
Or a stoplight instead of a hawk sign, you know?
Right.
So those kind of things would be upgrades that then would move into the city.
I'm excited to see this project move ahead. I remember the first time.
Totally.
Uh, we saw there's, one of the other commissioners, prior commissioners brought a, uh, video or picture of a wheelchair going down.
Yes, person in a wheelchair.
Person in a wheelchair, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
No, it's exciting.
It's a good project.
Right. So you will be putting that in, we're gonna work through the IGA, but as part of your budget process, you'll be putting that into your budget. Now, I wanna also get clear in the sense that we all can have an estimated cost and then we get the construction costs coming back. So it's our understanding that we've got this baseline going into next year, but we recognize that this minimal may change and we'd be coming back uh, in the following year to meet that.
It's three, what, in your budget? I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the cost could go up or down.
Yes.
If you go into recession, uh, there are some cost savings that might come through, or material costs. So, uh, I was just at a transportation meeting this morning and, uh, the costs are way up. The C dot projects that are being constructed this year and next year, but they're anticipating possible cost reductions in the future, so. That's just kind of the way it kinda works.
Yeah.
How much is in the budget?
So is that in the county's budget? We have three foot five for the parks.
Wonderful.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's proposed, not adopted yet.
Right.
We're planning to adopt December sixth.
December sixth.
Anybody wants to read it, I have.
We already have yours, I'm ready to read, right?
And is our goal to have that IGA completely sewn up? I'm thinking about from the attorney's point of view, completely sewn up before December sixth. Is that the anticipation?
I don't know.
We can't speak for the attorneys.
I will follow.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
You mean to ground truth our number?
Well, to to a signature on the agreement.
A signature on the agreement.
Yeah, so that we know everything's going forward and there's no question.
I mean, that would be, I think that'd be something an ideal goal to shoot for.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we're good on that?
A quick question on that. Um, and just maybe for your question, should we be signing an IGA as the city prior to adopting the budget where that funding is included?
Why do you?
The lawyers will work it out.
Okay, that's what.
I I think that we've stated it here. It's our intent, but we can't, there's some things we can't control with their scheduling. Is that good? All right, we're on a roll.
I think that County Road two fifty, two fifty-one is such an important project that will be probably one of the most important ones for the next ten, twenty years. Well, it's gonna last for twenty years, but for the way our city and county connect, so.
I think it's a great demonstration of our collaboration and our partnership. And I I think it's gonna be such a visible demonstration. Can't wait to see it.
Well, it's useful demonstration.
And useful.
Yes.
And safety-wise and inclusive, especially those that have seen the the photo of the the folks in a wheelchair with their flags going down the street. We need to get that taken care of. Okay, next item. Luke, you're on. Are you joining us at the table or are you up on the?
I have a few documents for you to see and then it's not much, so it'll be up to you guys if you wanna. Yeah, the table.
Well, we like you at the table.
Glad to do it.
Get to be in the room where it happens.
So I don't know if you realize, but the papers, the article's already in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had said that they were going to either attend or watch this meeting and then do an article, but, you know, that doesn't always work out. And so they went ahead and rented this morning, so. All right. Okay, so, quick background, um, and then I'll just do this real quick and then I can join you at the table for questions. So we, uh, partnered with the Public Advisory Group. Um, they were the ones who did our financial analysis before. And if you remember, brief summary of that, it showed that with our current funding model, we'd be okay for the next ten years under existing services, barring recession. And that if we went to a survey, uh, we did a mill increase, uh, update, um, of three point six five, we could extend services, extend staff, extend hours. So we decided the next step was to talk to the public. Um, minimum was four hundred and forty respondents, mostly by telephone, some in person. And the surveys, you know, very clearly laid out the specific estimated average dollar amount, not just the percentage, so that it was very clear when they'd be voting on. We do not have the full results yet. Uh, but we will have those at the end of October, but we do have, uh, we have the results. We just don't have them all compiled and data. And so he, Grant from Public Advice Group was able to send me some of the feedback on the top three questions, including top rate library services, support for district formation, and alternate use of funds if the district were approved. So the very, 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 very surprising amount was that seventy-one percent of people polled approved of the formation of a library district with that mil rates, only seventeen percent opposed and twelve percent undecided. If the, uh, likely voters polled, it was seventy-three percent approved, so even higher among likely voters. Physical impact of this project was just the eleven thousand four hundred and forty dollars we spent for the survey, no more costs associated with this phase. And this gives you just what they sent us. Um, our top-rated, uh, services are our cafe, our checkout of materials and tech access. Um, here's the respondents, seventy-one percent approve, seventeen opposed, twelve percent undecided. Very similar numbers in likely voters, we just slight increase in, uh, approve. And the not big surprise of what people would like to see with a silver bullet is affordable housing. Under that was childcare assistance, infrastructure, road and streets. Now, all the fun stuff of by demographics, by that, we'll have that fully by the end of October. And, uh, the next project, next steps for us would be to prepare a full report with Grant and bring that to you. And best practices, uh, formation of district, next steps, so that that process can begin. And if you want, I can just join you at the table, Mike, because that's very simple, the presentation.
Luke, can you clarify something? Because there was, there was an article, a comment in the paper that said, well, the survey was taken by people in the library.
That is not true.
And that I want.
A hundred percent not true.
I heard the phone.
Yeah.
So I wanted you to.
That is not true, yeah, so. Really surprising that a comment on a newspaper article wasn't factually accurate. Um, but, uh, yeah, Grant was physically, Grant was physically at the library. Grant was physically at the library one day to do some in-person surveying because he just happened to be in town because he was working on a possible project with the finance department. If I remember the correct department. But the vast majority of, uh, surveys were done by telephone. And we found very similar response rates, telephone or in person, which helps with the validity of the data. Uh, Grant is very confident in the results. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here for this portion of it, uh, but he's very happy to present at the next meeting with full results. Um, and says that in their last several survey projects they did, the numbers from survey to election were very similar.
Wow.
And I'd just like to comment, this is a survey of, uh, residents in the would-be district.
Yes.
In this form.
Yes.
So not just the city.
Right. Correct.
Not just, but it goes up the elements.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everywhere, isn't it? Basically everywhere where there's not a district almost?
Right.
Pretty much, pretty much. And what I'd like to say about the possible validity of this data, because it is surprising. Um, it's not what we expected. To give some context, two-thirds of city, uh, residents have a library card with us. And a third of the county who is not city residents have a library card with us. So we know there is very high personal adoption of library services in the county. So that would mean a very large proportion of our library card holders would say yes. Um, which would be, if that was true, and they were likely voters at the same time, which this poll seems to say, then adoption of a mill survey seems possible. If not likely.
Um, can you take us through the timeline, the timeline, your proposed timeline?
So, you know, I'd like to get the full data before I get the proposed timeline, but with this result, if it folds up in the data as we look at it, then we would say next steps would be come to the joint session and get direction from you. We'd already talked about the advisability of a public engagement group. Library agrees with that. I think, you know, you will see that in most successful district, um, projects that happens. We're very closely walking boulder, uh, because they go for a vote this November. Um, and they've got a wonderful fact page and so does their, you know, their public engagement group. I don't know if they're calling it that, but that's what it is. They've got some really wonderful facts, um, for how they did their timeline. And, um, it just depends on, uh, the decisions. What sometimes happens is, you know, there is a consultant who comes in and does like, what's the conscious coupling for the city and county versus the new district look like? Um, versus, sometimes it's done internally. And again, if there's a consultant hired, oftentimes that's done through future funds from the future district because it's going to be that, or sometimes it's split. And to answer the question about possible debt, again, sometimes that's carried by the new district through a repayment plan. And we're not reinventing any wheels there, and so that's some answers we would have. Hopefully, some basics of that by our next presentation. Those big picture of like, you know, okay, existing debts, um, and what do we want to do for next steps for determining the structure of how we, you know, separate certain shared resources that we would have to under a district? We'd like to have at least a recommendation for next steps for you guys to consider and then get direction from you for staff.
When does the current, uh, taxing, um, bond repayment, uh, end?
You know, I don't have that.
Twenty-five?
Florida Road or the library that ends in twenties, actually a year after.
Twenty twenty-six.
A year after the, uh, it expires, but the, um, tax was set to collect enough to pay it all. But that, we have to look at whether or not we're collecting what we think we're collecting.
Yeah.
Could be under collecting, over collecting.
Right.
Over collecting, over.
Yeah.
In this polling, to refresh my memory, was it any way, ways of letting those, the voters or those that were polled to know that this could potentially open up more revenue uh, for joint projects?
Yes, and that's where those come from. And there was, there was like, I think, there was ten choices and the full responses to all those ten choices and by demographics, we'll have that all tabulated out by the end of the month. But yeah, those, we are not surprised that, um, affordable housing is by far the top choice, and I think we'll see that across all demographics. Recent funding polling the city did on other issues about possible, you know, different revenue streams, housing seems to be the top interest.
Yeah.
Marsha, you have a?
You have a question just for us to be thinking about is, um, that's, first of all, great. This is really good news, um, in my, in my opinion. Um, do we, how s, how much specificity do we wanna get? Like, if we were gonna say affordable housing, childcare and infrastructure, I think one question for us is, is that just out there or then do we say we set up a separate committee to allocate that? You know, like, when some people go to vote, they say, here are the specific projects, because people are gonna say, what, what are you doing with the over three million?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a logical question voters would would want and should absolutely have to have answered. So that's part of my thinking, how specific do we say or who allocates that money?
Hundred percent.
Is it us through the?
Keeping in mind, this would be in perpetuity unless it was changed.
So not necessarily, well, the, the district would be.
Right.
But how the, how, like, how we might state that the money would be used, we could say an initial, you know, right, how, an initial emphasis on this, but the last thing we wanna do is tie ourselves in in perpetuity because we may not need to do affordable housing or childcare or whatever. We might need to do fire mitigation or something totally different, right? But we do need to have a, I think we need to have a, uh, kind of a plan for at least, say, the next three years so that there's some indication of where we believe that money would be spent.
And and I think it's this group that will figure out where it goes in the future. So I think that's very appropriate.
And just, I'm asking the level of specificity. Do we wanna say, here are the ten projects, whether it's a WWPF or? Yeah, yeah, I mean, not today, obviously, but just for us to be noodling on within the process.
And and I'll just really say, uh, you wanna balance flexibility with enough trust that the, the constituents have a sense of what you're gonna do. But just as our joint sales tax doesn't tie our hands.
Right, right.
It's allowed for what, it's what future councils determine and commissioners determine is appropriate.
Yeah.
It seems the, the same, the same comment you made, Mike, that we can't fix, uh, the allocation of joint sales tax. We can do it for the library, which was mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
So we couldn't do it for these.
Hundred percent, yeah. And what's good about the, if we do a PAC later on, which I'm sure we will if we go forward, we'll get a lot of good feedback from the public on, you know, beyond just this one survey, you know, and that can be part of where the messaging is done, that we want to know what your interests are, but these, these are not going to be set ranks. And so the public would know what they're voting on. And know, oh, okay, I don't really care about the library, but I really want that allocated to housing. Then it wouldn't necessarily be one-to-one. We'll be very clear on that. Um, because we, it, we'd be dooming ourselves if, you know, you know, you win an election and people feel lied to. We don't wanna break the trust of the library. So that's, that's something that we'd be very clear in the message because as, of course, it won't be the library to say it all, or the district, what happens to that money that's reallocated. But of course, it's gonna be inseparable in the minds of the voters, those two issues. So we'll be happy to work on, you know, finding good ways to make that data and messaging clear.
And and just this guidance is is a good beginning for the group that will carry this forward in the future. And also messaging as you develop, you know, communications about this.
So Luke, you said, um, so with the P H E, this is the second step with them? And then they will summarize these findings?
Yeah.
What, what's the next steps with P H E?
They, this is, part of this step is the analysis and data, uh, and presentation of it. So that's all a part of this last step. And that's, they're working on that to have that, uh, finished by the end of this month. And so then that gives us time to look at it as well and work with them on the presentation so that we can have not just, you know, the demographics and the data, but hopefully some answers to those really pressing questions, you know, debt assumption. Uh, you know, uh, we have an estimated administrative cost that would be carried over to the district versus that, but that doesn't have any of the how. And so what would be the library's recommended next steps for who determines that?
Great. And then will they present that to us jointly or city council and?
So I, 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 we've only done jointly so far because it's joint sales tax and we're happy to continue that. But you know me, I'll present anywhere, anytime, you know, so if you ask me to do it, I'll do it twice.
So to Melissa's question, I'm looking at Chuck, is our next joint meeting in January?
I'm not even sure if it's on the calendar yet.
I don't think it's, I think it's in January.
Yeah, I believe so.
So is that something that, to your question, would you possibly be in a position to present that to us when we come back?
Yes, that's what's good about that joint meeting being in January is I can give you more specific answers, hopefully, than vague options, um, because I'd really like to have real answers, um, and that'll give time for some of those. You know, some of the answers are going, depending on your decision, we'd go out to RFP, blah, blah, blah. But I can give you more specifics. I can get specifically exactly what the payment structure would look like if assumed by the district versus assumed jointly versus assumed entirely by the city, you know, and have those comparisons.
And if you could, would it be possible to have a proposed timeline at that point?
I'm hoping to, yeah, I think it is. I think it's possible. Now, some of that timeline, of course, will be broad, but that's usually what is the start of the process. Proposed timeline, proposed direction, proposed next step, then city council would, and county commissioners would give us direction, you know, please go ahead and looking for this. And then we'd come out with a specific proposal or RFP if we decide to go with consultancy. We work, you know, with our advisory board and friends and other groups on forming a PEG. And, you know, we'd be able to have a real timeline for that. And then the two ways a district can be formed are either one of the governing bodies votes on a resolution, puts forth a resolution to put it on a ballot and form a district. And the other one is getting a, a specific number of petitions. Of course, we as an institution would not want to go the petition route. And, you know, you know, council and county did not believe it was the advisable step forward. We would agree. You represent the will of the people, the voters who, you know, fund our libraries. So we're certainly not going to go against that. That as, again, the feasibility financial analysis showed that we've got funding for the next ten years barring extended services. Yes, we want to extend services, but not at the, you know, in that manner. Some libraries have gone that way. I don't think it's a, a good precedent for this community.
You mentioned that we have enough funding bar extended services, but we have in this budget numbers, we have two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Higher than the numbers that.
Yeah. And so I'd love to. Yeah, so to answer that, the reason that happened is kind of threefold. One, I came on to the job very late into the budgeting process. Two, we based our projection on grants numbers for the projections because we didn't have yet the projected sales tax. And three, and what I think is most important. I don't want to use all available funds if next year ends up being a recession year. This is a recession projection budget. So the fact that there's money on the table is because if we do have a, you know, recession, then we will be able to survive very well within the budget we have allocated, hopefully. And if there is a drop in what's actually collected because of that, it will hopefully not be so impactful that it leads to staff furloughs. So this is a budget of some very safe and conservative assumptions of what we are going to see in some inflation. And with continuing our existing services with some moderate increases, but not, you know, let's use that two hundred and seventy thousand to hire some more people. And then there's a recession next year, doesn't quite affect us, but the following year it does, and I've hired people that I can't sustain. Or because I've hired them, I have to like get rid of half my part-time crew. And so this is a conservative estimate. And so the fact that we have additional overage, I think fits very much the reality of the budgeting you're going into.
But it is a nine, a close to a nine percent difference.
Exactly. It's, it's an increase. It's an increase. I'm not trying to act like I'm like, you know, going in and asking for nothing. There are increases that we feel are needed, but conservative. We didn't want to say, okay, well, well, let's put, let's find something for that two hundred grand and then save seventy of it. We thought this will work. We will be well funded with this if they accept.
I understood that the other option would be to fund you at what you're requesting. And then if things change out of that surplus money that we carry over at any point, you could do and say, we need more funding.
Exactly. And that exists for that as well.
There's a way you can do it.
It, it could work that way, or that extra funding could go to, you know, manna and, you know, cleanup mitigation. And that makes sense too, because those are specific needs necessary. And if we don't have those funds and we need them, that's also the reality of a recession world. We know that could happen. That's why this is the budget we put forward.
I, I think.
Either one.
Charlie just finished with the same topic.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think it's a discussion we, we might have. I, I like that you anticipate reduced, you want to have reduced service or consistent services as we have now in the anticipation of a recession. But I think it would be a worthwhile discussion to have since there is the money available. Do we not want to provide that service now to our community for extended hours and Sunday opening hours? Because we can.
I don't, yeah, absolutely. Hundred percent. I'm worried that we can't and I don't want to give hours and then take it away. Because yes, next year with this budget, but two years from now is a big question mark in the budgeting cycle. And so I wouldn't want to commit staff in scheduling and then have to remove that staff and remove those hours. Especially just coming out of COVID, we're seeing a lot of growth in services to have that rock pool again.
Maybe two thousand and nine all over again.
Yeah.
Yeah, hope not.
Yeah, we don't want it again.
Regarding the survey, just a few more questions. I don't know the questions that they asked them, but I recall from our library advisory board meeting that they were trying to more formally evaluate the demand for the library services through this survey.
Yep.
And kind of gauge their level of satisfaction with current
Yep.
services as well as, you know, if we were to expand. They were trying to get community feedback on what areas they wanted to see that expansion. I'm not saying.
So I got that verbally from Grant and that was, so the top two areas are extended nighttime hours and extended Sunday hours.
Extended nighttime.
So, so what we would look at is to eight o'clock on Monday through Wednesday, Monday through Thursday. That's what you see in many, many libraries, especially district libraries. And also most district libraries in the area do have some Sunday hours.
And maybe we'll see that in the summer.
It will hundred percent be in the summer.
Okay, good.
Hundred percent.
Because I feel like what we just engaged, we should have that data.
Yeah, we will have it fully.
Okay, good.
We will have it fully. There were, that was a specific question. If you were to vote yes, what services would you like to see expanded?
Okay.
And that we'll have the full data on that.
So the question for, I'd like to propose, just to make sure we have consensus, is the level of comfort with the over budgeting? As a, as a cushion, should we go into thing, not as a spend, just whatever you want or? And then also Luke, as a manager, you know, I would, I used to watch my people very closely if they over budgeted and didn't deliver, then it was, it was also as bad as overspending.
Agreed.
So you need to go into it that we're not going to be evaluating on the sense of, oh, we didn't spend all this money.
Hundred percent.
So the question is, oh, sorry. The question is, is there a level of comfort with what Luke has proposed? Recognizing that it is over and we haven't agreed on our budget yet. This budget is over. There's a discrepancy.
I was gonna say, can we get through our budget first and then, and then see where it falls? Because what if we as a council push back? You know, during our budget retreat?
I'm looking for Chuck for when he needs that direction. Can we go into our budget on the eighteenth on Monday? Do you need direction now on that level or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so all right, good question. Great. Then we don't have to reach that today.
Okay.
All right. Luke, thank you. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you.
So can I just clarify? I'm sorry.
Sure.
So what you're saying is you go into your budget cycle and if, and this could change, the joint use sales task could go down essentially. After your budget discussion, is that what you're saying?
We haven't had, we, we've, I mean, we've got the budget, we've got the numbers.
Gone through it. You haven't wire brushed it yet. Okay, so it could go down as though.
Well, and keep in mind that that's not a budgeted number. That's a percentage generated number.
Yes, right, right. Okay, all right. So we can plug in a number that's lower. Is essentially, yeah, okay, if we all agree.
If, if I can try to clarify, so the joint sales tax number that's in there is, is a percentage of the projected sales tax income.
Right, yeah.
So if city council and the library work and come up with a budget, the joint sales tax number is not going to change.
Yeah.
Well, but that's, but that's not a set percentage. It's just a traditional percentage.
That's correct.
So we could change the percentage if we wanted to. And so to have it more, more closely match the actual budget. If we chose, that's why it could.
Yeah, it absolutely could.
And it could go into the transfers and, and it would just be for other stuff.
Which if there's a great housing opportunity, we could, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to keep the flexibility. I want you to have what you need, but I also
Yes.
know that we can come back at any point.
Like, as you said, nine percent increase is not me saying like, look at how frugal, I mean, it's, we're being frugal, but we're not being ridiculous. And so the fact that the projected sales tax came up a good deal higher than grants number was certainly wonderful. But it doesn't change our thinking about what we need in this climate drastically. And I will also say, this is also, we have grants as a measure. We have the friends, which actually has a surplus of a budget during COVID. So we have some strong flexibility for those kind of things that come to you where, oh, there's real opportunity that's, you know, going on for programming or, you know, services or outreach or special collections. The friends can more than cover that. They have, you know, a ample war chest right now that we're working with them to use next year as a year to spin that down and supplement for, you know, special services.
Jessica.
You probably won't know this, it just came on, but does anyone know, has the library budget always exactly matched? But no, because we've overpaid out of the general fund before and county has paid for libraries before they begin districts, like we've all kind of shifted. So it doesn't have to be exact.
No.
Like you have the percentage.
Yeah.
And then if an H back project comes in, oh, there's money there.
Right, you know, if I can, just, you know, one more thought on this, this polling, like, you know, like you were eloquently quoted in the Herald today. Thank you for that, being our representative and executive director. Appreciate your comments. But I thought it was, it's just very interesting to see the results of this poll and I want to reiterate it. Because, you know, in our library advisory board meeting, we were talking about even ourselves how we, we were, you know, we didn't expect this at all. And we were even having a conversation like, well, we're still going to go through with it anyway. Because, you know, we're recognizing that library services may have changed or, you know, or or the demand for services may have changed and staffing's changed and maybe people are looking for us to go to them and maybe they're looking more online. But I'm, I'm excited to see the results of that survey because certainly, you know, it, it sounds like from what we're hearing from this initial, you know, input that we received, that people actually are wanting that in-person extended hours. Having the physical site there more available and on Sundays. It's just, you know, not what we expected.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please do.
I remember the last meeting. So I, I do want to put it a little bit in perspective. Because the, if I remember the survey questions, I hope the survey questions will be part of the report or.
So I included them in the presentation packet and I can send those, I've, I can send those out to all councils and.
What I'm going to is, I remember during the last meeting we had discussing this, that the survey question would be, was in line with would you support a mill levy to extend as a condition so that we can extend the services? So the question was somewhat maybe biased or leading you to say, if you like extended services, you have to approve the mill levy. And I think that is something we have to really be clear in our community is that that is nothing to do with the mill levy or the library list because we can extend the services even right now. Except your, your suggestion is not to do it because of a potential recession or staffing issues or future of extending the service. But there is no need, there's no, how do I say that correctly? There's nothing restricting us financially at least from extending the services.
So.
With the district or with the current joint sales tax.
So I went from the, the specific results of the financial analysis, analysis done by the public advisory group. And they stated under that rate of sales tax for the next ten years, we could not extend services reliably.
Have you compared the numbers? Because we are looking.
Yeah, I have. I, I compare. And, you know, he, he was conservative with some of his numbers. Like for instance, this year was, he thought it'd be closer to three and it's three point two seven. So the, we know there's going to be fluctuation in that, but if we look at historically and we look at other libraries that are of similar makeup. Sales tax can sometimes provide the amount, but it doesn't always provide the stability.
Or the predictability.
Yeah, and that was, and that was the basis we were going forward on. And I will say, I am not economist and I'm not going to speak on matters that I don't understand. So I am result, I'm reliant on the, you know, findings of that consultation and my understanding of them as best I can.
No, and, and that's why I wanted to clarify it to Melissa, your, your point that you made is that some of the questions, and I hope to see that report might have steered people that answer to the survey into assuming that the condition for the extended services is purely based upon approving. And it's not, it is, it is conditional upon us as councils and county commissioners
Yep.
to assure the public fund.
Hundred percent. And we couldn't actually, go ahead, absolutely.
We go back in history and look at this, there's over many, many years, there's actually been more money in the sales tax, joint sales tax fund that we could have allocated to the library at any point in time. One of it is philosophy about what are we funding and why are we funding it? And what's our, what's our commitment and what is the joint sales tax for? It wasn't designed to be the sole funder of the library. That was not the intent of it in the first place. And there are a lot of other things that we need to be able to fund also. So the library being able to take care of itself moves that dependence off of sales tax and puts it on property tax, which is much more consistent. And, and it also changes in this day and age, goes up and down because of property values. And I think that's going to continue for a long time. But sales tax is highly variable. And so I just want to say that it isn't just that we could go ahead and put that money into the library because we could have been doing that over all the years. It's a philosophical choice that this group has been making about how the library functions.
And I would just like to add that we're, we build on the work of our predecessors. And I remember many sessions of, of, of your predecessors saying, it really troubles me that we're funding operations, annual operations. I know you would prefer to fund something capital that we all need to take care of. So I, I do want to recognize that too. We got ourselves into this. And now there is a possibility of providing stable, predictable and independently managed resources.
And Mayor, I'd like to add, addressing what we all, I think, mostly agree. I don't know if everybody around this table agrees, is a crisis in our community, which is affordable housing and childcare and the infrastructure and not to mention any future multimodal that we may have together, not to mention if we, you know, where we go with the homeless manage camp and really manage community, I think is the new word we're supposed to be using and really helping people exit housing. I, I mean, exit homelessness and getting into various kinds of, you know, we don't want that. That's the problem, right? So, so, you know, I think, I think that it, to me, this is really exciting to speak. I mean, not only the whole number in general, but that is really exciting because our job is to be solving problems. And we can't do that with housing without money.
So let me just try to wrap this up. If, if we're all good, we're going to have our next meeting in January. We, we think and council will always have a chance to add some input into the design, to the agenda. But hopefully we'll hear from Luke on that. In between time, we will have our budget discussion about the library's budget and through Jose, convey our thoughts on over, on, you know, appropriately funding. So that will give Chuck some of the direction or some of the thinking that we have there. We will support the transfer or the support of the money. We, Chuck, just to clarify, does that mean we will automatically be taking a, a possible two hundred and fifty thousand dollar removal?
Correct.
You won't do it in advance till you have the, the?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll be doing that. And then I, I did also want to add that, just for you guys all is aware. Marsha and I met with the wildfire and watershed protection team and we had asked in previous meetings to possibly get that on the agenda. And there's some exciting things happening. I don't want to go through it now. But in the, at a future session, you may want to think about being updated on that. That's a, again, another example of the city and the county working together on a big issue. And so I, I wanted to put that out for folks. I will be sharing it with council, some of it at our meeting, but that may be something that you want to think about. Anything else before we actually wrap up this meeting?
I'll just say that I'll reach out through Jose so I can get questions that you would like to see included. So that, you know, the recommendations can be substantive, clear and actionable.
You know what, Mayor, I did have one quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, please.
Before we adjourn, I forgot to ask it earlier. It was regarding, and it's back to homelessness, but it's just a quick question. If you can help me this. May I ask one more about the library? So that they're all fixed with the library. If, when you get that report, maybe you could share it at that time so that then we can ask questions.
As soon as I get it, I will share. As soon as I get, yeah, I'm sorry, to clarify. That way your question. To clarify, that way your questions can be specific to the report, specific to that, what it draws out. So I can answer all those questions and Grant can answer all those questions in the presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, so very quickly, you know, back to homelessness, very. You know, we've done, I, I think that I'm, I'm very thankful for the work that we've done in getting our families and mothers, children placed in motels. And I'm curious how we paid for that, who paid for that, and if it's an ongoing expense.
Good question. Very good question.
I'll start with your last question. It is an ongoing expense as long as they're in motels. So, so that's a problem. That's something that, that we're tracking very closely. So, so far we've been fortunate to get grant funding for that. However, multiple grants, many different grants actually. And there is concern that, that grant funding is not going to be available forever. I brought to the board last Monday during our budget discussions, a request for twenty twenty-two dollars. We have a line item in our, in our general fund already for homeless expenditures that we've been spending from, for example, fifty-two thousand dollars street outreach program. So we funded that. And I asked the board, could we allocate or give me direction to spend up to forty thousand dollars additionally to extend the hotel stays for one more month? So we haven't had to. We've got ten families and over forty individuals in motel travel. So it's very expensive and it can't last forever. We are trying to get, again, all of those individuals had to come through the coordinated entry system so that they're, they're transitioning to housing. We have at least one success story. We have a family placed into housing. And that's great. That's what we're trying to do. But it's very, very expensive. And so if and when I get the phone call from Ann Morris that says, I, I can't get any more grants, the board has given me the, the direction that I can use the general fund money that we have set aside to extend that for one more month. There's also concern, we've heard from ones at the granting, awarding authorities, that they wanted to see commitment from local government. And so just the board taking that action actually got us a little bit more money. So, so that was, that was good on, on the board's part last Monday. But right now it's grant funding. The county is prepared to step in when that dries up, and that'll give us one more month.
And may I ask if that includes housing vouchers that are coming from the state? Because when we met with the person who talked about it, I don't have my notes in front of me, but they said there were, at least I think we had available thirty housing vouchers.
There are housing vouchers. That's a different program though than motels. So that's implemented through housing facilities of the Southwest. I don't have any stats.
Right. And it's just getting in line to get the housing.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think we have a surplus of vouchers and less housing than we can actually get them into.
It's above what dollars.
When I spoke with Project Roxy about this exact conversation about what other communities were doing, and I don't remember which city it was up by Denver. But the mayor of that city said, I want you to do an analysis. I want to know what would it cost to put people in motel rooms? And I want to know what would it cost to create tiny homes in a managed camp or something, you know, whatever that looks like. Managed community now, right?
Right.
So it turned out that with all that analysis, the managed community was cheaper than the hotel rooms. Because he wanted to make the right decision budget-wise, not just, just go, okay, go ahead and put them in hotels. So I think that's one of the things that we as a group need to really sit down and talk about. And I'm not, I, you know, I, I've been saying this a while and council's probably going, don't say that again. But the group of four, so that's what I'm calling you four bad guys. And Chuck and Jose and Marcia and Barbara, and bad, I mean, good, you know, I mean hardcore. We haven't been able to give guidance as a council to Barbara and to Jose about things like that. Like where, is there anywhere we would want to put money into? Is it hotels? Is it a managed camp? What is it that we want to do? Because without those kind of conversations, how do we know where we're going? And so I just want to put that out there again, that I think that is a really important conversation. But you as a commission may have already had some of those conversations, but we haven't. And I don't think we can come together as eight people and hash it out. I think we kind of have to come together as two groups and then figure out where we go, you know, from there.
And we have talked about having those conversations. We will. We're, as you know, there's a lot of moving parts, you know.
Yeah.
And we all know publicly, because it's on our agenda that we met in executive session. So, you know, so we're, we're, we're taking steps, but I was curious as to where we kind of were with that. And I hope we can continue keeping each other informed on the motel status. I think that that has been an important part of disclosure of public list program. So I was just really curious where we were with that. So.
I think it boils down to a site. Because once you get the site, depending on the acres, what some communities do is they do a combination. They do some of the, I, I'm using pallet shelter with a small P because we would go through, you know, whoever sets up the managed camp would need to procure it from a company or have them built or whatever they do. But, you know, you, you start engineering for that site and designing that site, just like any project. So some people put on tiny homes. They, or even like, oh, wow, that site already has an apartment complex or, you know, it's just, it all depends on, that's, that's the lynchpin.
And that's exactly what some councillors have said, is it does depend on the site. So that's we're waiting to kind of see where we go.
And that's the other thing that we don't actually have agreement on. Do we support a site? So we can publicly give guidance on that. So that's one of the biggest challenges too, is we don't have, we haven't had that as a public conversation.
So, so, yeah, so what I will say, that's, so for council. Chuck, what I am hearing from you, I guess maybe I'm interpreting it, is that the county has put a line item in its budget automatically of up to forty thousand. And, well, I don't know that we necessarily have or will. But what I recognize is that at any point in the year, you may come back and say, hey, we need to think about some of this over surplus that we have, that we keep to be responsive, particularly Melissa, in your question to these families.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. Just to clarify, so the line item in our budget is actually two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And we've been spending from that to cover expenses associated with proposal plus, the due diligence on the highway one sixty property, et cetera. And it's from that line item that the board has given me direction that if needed to extend the hotel voucher program, I can spend up to forty thousand dollars of that.
I see.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
There's a separate cap award. Isn't there for a.
Community.
Managed community.
Managed community.
Not in our budget.
No, no, not in our budget, not in the proposed budget.
You have the, the ARPA money that you're still, still prepared to be, to partner with the city on, up to one million.
That's correct.
That's what I mean. Sorry, wrong term.
That's correct.
Right, right, right. I think you're raising a really good point. And I think that it may be valuable for us at some point. I don't know if we would have time in January to really look at the strategic plan on homelessness and say, where are we at with this? You know, do we agree with this? And then what is the mechanism by which, are there some things we don't agree with? It was done three years ago. And we've learned so much. And, you know, we've had some good stories and some not so great stories. So I, I mean, that's, we had a good conversation, I think, yesterday with, with Sandhya and Ann about that, that we're asking a very big group of people over twenty, the CCH, to go forth and take our marching orders from that plan. So is that plan still what we want to do around homelessness? So, you know, that's, I think, I don't know when and how that would ever get scheduled, but, and I'd love to look at what other communities are doing. Maybe it's time, because this, in, when the plan was done in twenty twenty, it wasn't skyrocketing nearly as much as it is now.
Luke has done a lot of good work on that, and maybe that's something you can show with the commissioners.
Hundred percent. I can share everything that I've already sent to council.
Yeah.
And just share that. That's very easy. We've looked at safe parking, managed camps, and just some general overall numbers of what we have, what our rate is in the community versus national average and stuff like, and so, and so, so I can make all that available.
Yeah, was that in your PowerPoint?
Some of it was.
Yeah.
But some of the background data that informed that and the articles that informed that those were not. And I can just provide that as well. It's just a little.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the percentage in your PowerPoint, we need to refine because I think you have to use fifty-six thousand, not twenty. Because it, it brings the rate for Durango down. Not that we have to get tripped up on that.
Well, so here's the tricky part about that is the survey from Nina looked at all areas that were very much in Durango. And then that was what the number they got. So they, they said four hundred in the county. But they really meant largely centered in Durango. So we assume that there's anywhere from two to three hundred in Durango at the height of our youth and maybe up to four hundred. And that's why we say it's one point five to two percent of our population. But it could be lower and we know it varies. It varies wildly depending on the time of the year.
And I will add, I believe a hundred of that number for three hundred in the city are students at the college.
I know.
So that throws things off too. If you're starting to.
Absolutely.
Something that so dominates, one third of your population is based on a student population.
Yes.
That's also throw, it can skew those numbers
Absolutely.
to the higher end.
Yeah, that was just to show not, this is a set number that should set policy just to show that our next thing was housing. We are not going to be able to house ourselves out of this problem.
Yeah.
Ever with those numbers. Students and not, that, that's, that's not the one solution.
I want to make certain we're not going into something that's not.
Yeah, on the agenda.
So I'm staying with this because of the joint sales tax discussion. But I want to be very careful that we're not stepping over that. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to moderate that conversation.
Yes, put it in January.
Yeah.
In Jan.
In January.
What I made a note for, it's always, it's not that we're agreeing upon it, but I made three notes for January. The library, the homeless strategic plan possibility, and then the wildfire and watershed protection fund. Is it possible January agenda which you would be handling?
Great.
Sounds good. Good conversation though.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.